Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees. That the record show that a quorum of the board members is present. That notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with this Texas Open Meeting Act. We will now proceed with the public meeting and we'll call on Ms. Lisa Barberick to begin.
Good evening, President Irvin, or Members Superintendent Dowey. Tonight we're holding our public meeting for the 1718 proposed tax, proposed budget and proposed tax rate. Budget requirements are that we adopt no later than June 30th. We have posted in the newspaper that we're holding this meeting by June 1st. We hold a public hearing which we're doing on tonight, June 15th. And then the certified property values will not be available until July of 2017. So we will adopt a tax rate at the following month. The assumptions we use to build this budget this year. We used a refined ADA of 5918.32. And a tax rate for our M&amp;O budget of $1.17. An estimated debt service tax rate of 18 cents. And I actually expect that to come in lower. But again, the certified property values will not be available until July of 2017. And then a 2% flat raise was given to all employees. So on the general fund revenues. Overall, we are projecting a small increase of $215,000. That, in local revenues, we have a tiny bit of increase due to projected higher tax values coming in due to reappraisal of property. Once we do get, that process finished, is finished, we do expect that to come in quite a bit higher. We also received a grant from Forcing Training. And that was presented as a donation last month. But the training will occur in the next fiscal year. So we're looking at $51.3 million in revenues. So working through expenditures. By function, instruction increases quite a bit, mostly due to increase in staffing on campus, at campus levels. Staffing curriculum development has dropped due to movement of some of those expenses to federal. But also in curtailing some of our traveling that we do. And try to streamline that better and bring people in to, into us and provide in-house training. Instructional leadership, that's our curriculum department. That has decreased in an effort to add more staff to campuses. And then the school leadership, that increases due to adding assistant principals across many campuses. Guidance and counseling increase is due to adding counselors and a counseling secretary. Student transportation has decreased due to an effort to bring down our overtime. To bring down costs for bus parts and in repairs. By updating our fleet. And streamlining, try to use our, utilize our personnel in a better, more efficient way. Extracurricular and co-curricular have been decreased in the, due to having to bring in more staff to campuses. General administration has been decreased for the same reason, as well as cuts in personnel. Facilities, maintenance and operations is increasing due to increase in, increase in demands. As well as providing funds at a campus level. And then of course, function 81, that's our significant decrease. That is due to all of the construction that we've had going on. It's winding down. But once we close our fiscal year and we find out, you know, that we haven't spent all our funds. We will roll the unused funds over. So that will increase and that budget amendment will be brought to you next fiscal year. So our total expenditures are expected to be 51.3 million. So in summary, here we see our revenues at 51.3 and our expenditures at 51.3. With an ending fund balance of 17 million. So our general fund balance is projected to be 17 million. One month operating expenditures is 4.2 million. The board has adopted that we have three months. And that comes out to 12.6 million. So we have reached our target for our fund balance. Some general fund highlights, we gave a 2% raise to all employees. We added over 1.5 million in salaries. And 79% of our budget is in salaries and benefits. So there you can see a breakdown by major object code showing that the largest majority of our budget is in salaries and benefits. In student nutrition. We are seeing a slight decrease overall in our revenues. That's due to feeding less children due to our ADA dropping, our enrollment dropping. And as a result, our expenditures are also dropping. But the big drop is in facility acquisition and constructions. This past year, we put in a new ventahood at the central kitchen and that was quite expensive. And obviously, we will not be doing that again. So we have a balanced budget. And we will project to have an ending fund balance of $575,000. In debt service. I did an estimation of 18 cent tax rate. I really do expect that to come in lower. We have revenues projected at $3.1 million. And expenditures at $3.7 million. So we will have a deficit balance of $161,000. But that is what we want. We are trying to get our fund balance down because we can't spend those funds on anything but debt service. So our tax rates are $1.17 and debt service will be determined at a later date. And I would like to open up questions to the audience, if I may.
Yes ma'am, you may.
Does anybody have any questions? Do I have any questions from the board? That closes this session.
Thank you. And then entertain a motion to close the special session.
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, so be ordered. 5:15.
I want to thank Lisa. She has done a tremendous job this year with this budget. Working with the principals and time and time again to try to create a zero-based budget. And she has done a tremendous job with that, for also trying to meet the needs of the campuses. Yeah.
Point zero seven one five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero seven six and five five one point one two nine. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now five sixteen.
...
It is now six twenty-two and the board will reconvene into open session and we'll ask Mr. Russell Smith to, for our invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with us tonight as we carry on the district, the business of the district and for the betterment of our students. We ask that you go and be with us throughout each day, help us lead lives pleasing unto you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Who's doing our pledges tonight? Members of the board?
Oh, okay.
Okay. It was just blank. We're standing down for the pledge to the flags. Steve, Steve.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Honor to the Texas flag. The integrity of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you so much. At this time, the board has set aside to receive citizens. Any comments?
Don't we need to vote in person now?
Individuals wishing to address the board should have completed the form located on the tables by the entrance door and provided it to me and Holly prior to the meeting. And I think we have three tonight. Comments will be kept to a maximum of three minutes. Groups of five or more individuals having the same concern shall have a single spokesperson for the group. The board reminds speakers that this time of open forum is not the time or place to bring board complaints about particular programs or particular employees. The board has adopted specific complaint policies and specific procedures for presenting those complaints. Board cannot respond to the comments in this open forum but can inform you of policy, complaint procedures available under board policy. So we now call Trishella Roy. Thank you. Mr. Martin will be here.
He's a valedictorian.
Good evening, President Urban, board members, Superintendent Dowdy. My name is Trishella Roy and I am the valedictorian of the class of 2017 at McAdams High School. I am a product of this town and the NHS community. As a result, I hope that by communicating my concerns at this forum, I can bring awareness to the issues facing students of NHS directly and indirectly due to the general atmosphere of instability, lack of appropriate communication, discomfort and disempowerment that I've observed during this past school year. My hope is that you are able to acknowledge and redress the issues with an urgency pertaining the situation. My first point is about low morale observed in students and teachers. Having high morale and enthusiasm towards education and schooling is a catalyst for student students building successful careers after their high school years. I witnessed one of my favorite and most respected teachers cry for the first time in the last three years that I've known her. Although she did not feel comfortable discussing the issue, it was clear that she was struggling with the manner with which school administrators treated her and communicated with her. Seeing our teachers defeated in such a manner, we also felt defeated. How can we perform to the best of our abilities if we are dragged down constantly by low morale, disrespect and delegitimization? Apart from low morale, the tension and discomfort of the teachers was palpable to our students. As per my understanding, successful leaders bring about changes by harnessing the local ideas and talents and not dismissing good practices that have worked towards good results. Contrary to this practice, we felt that our teachers came to work stressed out and preoccupied with issues that they could not discuss with us. As a result, we became increasingly anxious by the conflicts happening between faculty and administration. How can B, the students, concentrate and focus on what is being taught if we are facing uncertainty indirectly through our teachers' concerns? Combined with low morale and continuous tension, there was a distinct air of disempowerment. Whether it was surprise teacher evaluations, preemptive dismissal, or increased administrative hall monitoring, the whole school felt caged and constricted. Ironically, our school often felt like a microcosm of the dystopian novels that we critique. High school is meant to be a place to be innovative and creative, to be able to learn in an environment of free and fair flow of ideas and expressions. Instead, it felt more like an environment of dictatorship, something that is reflected in the voluntary and involuntary resignations of upwards of forty of our teachers. How can we learn to promote empowerment and leadership through democratic ideals if our school fails to emulate such an environment? In conclusion, we need a stable, fair system of education in our school that practices respect for its stakeholders, that has effective governments at the district level, and that prepares us, the students, for the outside world. I hope that I have persuaded you to rethink and reconsider some of the administrative practices, policies and changes so that we can all be a part of a successful high school and school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask our attorney, Ken, is it appropriate for a statement of fact on the number of resignations from the high school from the superintendent?
The superintendent can certainly respond to a statement made in closed session, I mean, statement made in public comment with a fact. So if there was a...
I don't have the numbers right in front of me that I gave you all last time, but the actual number of resignations, our teachers leaving on their own accord, you've got, we have different categories. We have those that are leaving because of resignations. We have those that are retired and we have those that are doing transfers to other parts of the district. And then we have those that were asked to leave, okay, under certain circumstances. And those that have resigned on their own as of, the last count, I believe, was fourteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, with sixteen. So the other numbers that you, it's not forty, but, but the others, there's a large number that for other reasons, that cannot be discussed or whatever, that had to leave. And so you have to look and not, for those reasons, you can't, you can't disclose, okay? But there's actually sixteen that resigned on their own. As of today.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Anna K. Tekele. Did I pronounce that right? Tekele?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That was our valedictorian and salutatorian.
Right. Salutatorian.
Thank you, board members, for taking the time to listen to me today. My name is Kate Tekele and I am soon to be a senior at Nakadoches High School. My entire high school experience has since been at NHS and there I have been blessed with the good, the bad and the ugly. But never until this year have I been prompted to speak out to the school board and the community about the extent of my concerns. During the school year 2016, 2017, I have seen my teachers grow increasingly discomforted with the direction that NHS is heading and I cannot disagree with them. This past school year has been on a trial and tribulation and the unprecedented number of teachers who have made the choice to move on from NHS is the perfect demonstration of this. Good teachers are hard to find and excellent ones are few and far between. This is why I am disturbed at the thought of losing so many educators from NHS who have proven time and again that they have what it takes to connect with their students and teach them the material necessary for later life. Teaching is more than following a rigid set of laws or pasting a palatable acronym to a wall. Teaching is about community and building relationships. There are no shortcuts to relationships. They take time and a draining amount of energy, but they are what teachers must develop to be truly excellent. When even one teacher leaves, community is broken and I hesitate to ponder the community that would be left for the 2017, 2018 school year. As an upperclassman at NHS, I feel certain that my education and the education of others will suffer during this upcoming school year. And NHS is primed to be full of new teachers who will themselves need to be taught and will have new people for whom to learn, as many of the most experienced teachers are among the mass exodus from the campus. In the 2017, 2018 school year, I will be working to graduate from NHS and I will need to be as prepared as I can be to go out into the world. It is my hope that Nakadoches High School will be a help to me in this work, not a dead weight. On the NISD School Board's webpage states, "We believe every employee of the district plays a vital role in the educational process. I want to see the truth in that statement at Nakadoches High School. I would ask the school board to look at changes that have been made recently to see if they can find a plausible cause and effect situation that could be the root of the issues that have taken hold to NHS this past year. It seems to me that to solve the problems that have been plaguing NHS, changes need to be made. I am aware that it is not my place to make assumptions about things that were tied normally apart, so I am presenting the problems that I have observed to the board in the hopes that those who are more strongly versed in the running of the district will work toward what needs to be done and will be alert and determined enough to take action." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Michelle Peck.
Good evening, President, our board members and Superintendent Dowdy. Happy summer. On my way into town this morning, I drove down Park Street and I saw a poorly scaled logo that $9,850 of bar school district funds were used to pay for on the promise that money was going to be raised by a board member. Now that the work is done, I'm really curious to know when the fundraising efforts will begin or be complete. As a board, you oversee one of the largest employers in our town and this morning it was announced that the agreement between Nakadoches ISD and Angelina College has crumbled, removing even more money from our budget. Every resource is vital when it comes to turning things around and please recoup the guarantee from those who promised to sponsor the spending the district made so those funds can be invested into improving outcomes for the students of Nakadoches ISD. We're probably getting close to the time for the new 2017-18 student handbook to hit your agenda and I'm sure you have no trouble recalling the decision that the district made last year to make all students subject to discipline methods that include corporal punishment. I was informed by Ms. Dowdy that she does not support corporal punishment, yet she's made no public presentation encouraging you to change the policy and is bound to uphold the policies of the board. No child should be subjected to discipline methods by Nakadoches ISD employees that include hitting, paddling, spanking, switching, squatting, shaking, force exercise, or other physical punishment as the law defines it under any circumstances. Using corporal punishment doesn't align with our published objective of focusing on advancing academics or with recently avanti gold statements, gold statements focusing on improving court, or improving discipline. Thirty-one states have banned corporal punishments in schools, as has the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the American Bar Association and the ACLU. If the national perspective does not give you pause, I want to remind you of what a Nakadoches principal said in a board meeting, and I'm paraphrasing. He said, "Students act out because they're frustrated about not being able to participate because they don't understand the material." Pain and physical injuries that can result from the use of corporal punishment can also stoke the academic development of children. You're hurting academic achievement and their long-term well-being when you use these practices. I ask you to weigh the significant evidence again and get rid of corporal punishment in our schools because all students deserve to be taught in a safe and secure environment. Finally, I raised estimation errors last year inherent in the district's 1617 rezoning plan. The board moved forward with ill-supported effort, causing overcrowding, scheduling and service issues. Parents of children who were told their kids could finish up if they are attending campus have received letters intimating that the grandfather clause has been rescinded and those kids are getting reshuffled, a promise broken by this board. These children deserve to finish where they started, but I appreciate the study that you're continuing for rezoning to an equitable redistricting next year.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. We now come to the information items.
Let me answer something on that. The transfers, we have a transfer committee now that looks at every, every application and we did hold to the grandfather clause. And if we made a mistake on someone, all they need to do is notify us, but anybody that is, I mean, any transfer student that was under the grandfather clause gets to continue as promised through the middle school. If that's what we're talking about.
Are you doing that on record for that family?
Well, then they haven't notified me, okay? So if they notify me, it's corrected. But that rule stands and we made sure that in the committee that helped, that we would hold all rezoning, or the ones under rezoning, grandfather would be able to stay at those campuses. Got it?
We now come to the information items, reports, segment of tonight's meeting and we'll begin with our superintendent.
Thank you. Got good news tonight. I'm gonna first talk about star scores were released to districts yesterday. They are the scores, not the accountability ratings, and they're not all complete, but we have a good idea of where we stand. We are up and down in areas, but overall, I'm very proud of the gains. We are reviewing them now and waiting on the state scores to determine where our district stands completely. The scores for the district report, if you look at the district, just the district scores, we are up in fifteen out of the 22 areas, one state stagnant. I sent the board an update on that. It looks, and I'm gonna cross my fingers, I probably shouldn't even say this, but we are doing some preliminary work on the accountability and plugging those in, but it looks like that we might be out of IR for the district because we've made enough gains and it looks like some campuses may be looking really good that might come out. So we've got our fingers crossed, so it's good stuff. And it's because of all the hard work that the personnel have put into that. So don't hold me to that, but I'm saying that it looks really promising, okay? Because we've been working on these scores that have come in, right Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. The official 1718 school supplies list for our elementary and middle schools are posted on the district website now and I want to thank Lisa, Lisha and her group because we are working hard to get out every bit of the information for the beginning of school early this year. We're working on handbooks across the district as I speak. I mean, we've been working nights to get those handbooks formatted and professional looking and out on the website and then back into the hands of the parents on time. Student-teacher achievement, McMichael Middle School is hosting the district's 17 Middle School Summer School Program, High Tech Summer Camp from June 5th through the 21st. Angela and her teachers have poured their heart and they have, soul and time into making this two-week program engaging, individualized and creative approach to target skills that students, that students were lacking. The SFA STEM Academy students at Nakadoches High School have been leading hands-on science lessons for summer school students at Fredonia Elementary. This was a great partnership we had that those students would go over and help the elementary kids this summer as part of their projects on June 8th. And will be teaching students again at Regay Elementary on June 15th. And I have, I brought with me the numbers. This is the largest summer school that we've had and I want only to grow that summer school because we need more kids involved during the summer, especially to catch, catch them up on areas of need. In Carpenter, we have 116 students and Fredonia, we had 70 and that's because of the grants that they received. High School has 175 in their summer school and 60 EOC students there that will be getting ready to retake the tests this summer. McMichael has 70 of the SSI students, the eighth graders going into ninth grade, and Moses 52. And then we had 43 students that we needed just for sixth and seventh grade extra help. Bilingual is in primary, has 170, and special ed has not started, that will start in July. So we have about 756 students this year in summer school, which is a huge increase. And so we're really happy about that. They're doing a great job. Campus personnel updates, Sammy Kinsey, Dr. Vaughn and Melinda Webold, along with their TIPS teams, have been at a TIPS conference in San Antonio all week, I kept saying Austin, but it's San Antonio, learning new things to bring back to the district regarding the grants. Pre-kindergarten from Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language will be moved to Emeline Carpenter Elementary for the 1718 school year, we've been announcing that. The district alternative education program will move from the Martin Center to the Malcolm Rector Technical Training Center for 1718. The move will take place after June 30th when Angelina vacates the building. We are in continued efforts with Angelina and it looks very good that we will have summer, I mean, night classes. And so we're working with them to provide what we want to do is increase our offerings to our most at-risk students and provide programs for them so that they can be prepared with certifications or whatever to go out so that we do not forget them.
For clarification, you said summer night classes?
I, sorry, fall, fall. It's summer, fall. We're looking for a fall. And so we will start small, but at the same time, our goal is to create a wonderful, non-traditional high school for students that, in other words, would may not go to college. They have a way to provide access to get certifications and go into the field of work as soon as they graduate. So we're gonna work on that, that project. Deaf education will be moved to the, no, it will not. We've changed that, so we're not gonna do that now. Never mind. We're not gonna move that program. Community involvement, when the school year ends, summer meals begin. Nakadoches ISD summer meals begin June 5th, 2017. While the children are gathered at select sites, they will have the opportunity to expand their reading skills with the Nakadoches Rotary Club Mobile Library, a great effort. Okay? And then I want to say one more thing. Last month, Steve Green said that he gave me a lot of credit for bringing grants in for the district, but I want to say that the work actually goes with people in the field that, it's easy for me to find the grants and say, here, work on these. Lisa and Sammy and Jennifer and Andy, Cindy Ivy and Sharon and that group have worked very hard on these grants to bring them in. And we're gonna actually be writing two more grants this summer, one for TJR and one for McMichael, that we hope to reel in for some more money, okay? So, good things. Gary, we would ask if you could come up for a minute, we have for a special presentation regarding tax collection.
Now?
Yes, yes, now.
I know it is your wife. Well, it's actually...
It's a question, but it comes in the financial.
It comes into, it actually gonna come out in the financial statements.
Yeah, when we get down to consent agenda.
Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
We can take it out of order because you've been sitting here.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Wood.
Ken, what I would need to do, sir, is make a motion to pull item B off your consent agenda.
Okay. You wanna ask this question now or call him back at that time?
That motion needs to pass first and then, if there are seconds, parliamentary.
Okay, well, okay. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Go ahead, have a seat. Let's do it this way. Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. We come now to the consent agenda. Unless we move the consent agenda from the consent agenda, all items will be acted on with one motion. So if there's any board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter and it will be set aside for further discussion and a separate vote.
Mr. President, I would like to pull item 6B.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then the chair would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, all except 6B. I'm gonna approve.
No second?
Both moved and second, all in favor, as you have had? Unanimous? Mrs. Fitch?
Yes. Mr. Woods, I'll jump to my question first on this. Board members, I believe it's page 46 and you're...
Mr. President, I would like to pull Item 6B.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then the Chair would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, all except 6B.
I'm gonna approve.
No second?
Both moved and second, all in favor, show of hand. Unanimous, Mrs. Fitch.
Yes. Mr. Woods, I'll jump to my question first on this. Board members, I believe it's page 46 in your, in your board manual, or board book, Mr. Woods, I believe it's the part of your report, it's a report from your office, and at the top it says page two, and it's the portion of your report regarding delinquent tax collections year-to-date, or year through, this was ending in May, as of the end of the month in May. My question was, we've seen a significant drop in delinquent tax collections of roughly $250,000 less than the same time period last year, and my question was why?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm up now?
Yes, sir.
I imagine that Urban, Urban, Member of the Board and Superintendent Dowdy, I don't necessarily always consider it a pleasure to be here, depending on what's going on, but I certainly always consider it a privilege. And based on the question, I need to show you a visual.
Okay.
This is a fence. I'm gonna stand on it. There are some things that I need to present, but I'm standing on the fence. When I first was contacted yesterday, the question was specifically, are we doing the same effort that we've been doing in the past? Which is a common question when you look at a decline in delinquent collections. And I worried about coming up here and answering it because Nacogdoches School District has a separate contract with the law firm. It's not my place to answer for the law firm because they don't work for me. The law firm that collects for everybody else is contracted through my office and does work for me. So I'm standing on the fence because I'm going to explain what I think, I'm not going to address anything, I don't want to address anything that would be insinuated that there's not effort, because there certainly is, okay? But there's a few things that I do want to point out. I've got, is it okay if I come forward and give you something?
Yes. You're the one that gotta approve that. That's fine.
I did this purposely to confuse you beyond any recognition, but when I get through, I think you're gonna send a real simple explanation for what I'm giving. Please do not try to read it and figure it out for yourself. I think that would be a mistake. Anybody else want to? Back on the fence now, it's gonna stay here with you. Anytime you look at the delinquent tax roll, there's always a separate issue for any taxpayer, ability to pay, refusal to pay, there's lots of different issues why there's a delinquent tax roll. So I took your report that you alluded to, and so that the people in the audience will know, this is a report that we provided as of the end of May 2017. Now, when we report in May, that means that we've only had the delinquent 2016 tax roll for four months. That's one-third of a year. This time next year, we'll have all of the, so we're talking about 2015 delinquent taxes primarily. The number that you alluded to this time last year, we had collected $426,000 in delinquent taxes. As of this report, we collected $276,000 in delinquent taxes, okay? So there's the big drop, I think, that you were alluding to, you know, is, are we still putting the same effort into it? What is the situation? Right up front, I want to tell you that the 2015 delinquent tax roll had nine taxpayers that paid $210,000. Just nine. Unique, unusual, not an every-year occurrence, okay? Now, when you look at what I gave you, on the left hand, there's a column that says five-year-old delinquent, four-year-old delinquent, three-year-old delinquent, two-year-old delinquent, one-year-old delinquent. In the last five years, every year, the bottom five years still have a lot of money to collect. It takes a while to collect them. As time goes on, compared to the 10th year, it's down almost nothing. But I took the report from May 2014, which is the 2013 tax roll, that's the first column, and I listed what we started with on that, on that report, as far as five-year-old, four-year-old, three-year-old, two-year-old, one-year-old delinquents by year. That totaled $1,030,000 potential to collect. We collected $294,000 by the report in May of 2014, which is 28%. If you go to the next column, May of 2015, that's the 14 tax roll, 2014 tax roll, we dropped off a year, we've added a year, so the five-year older taxes totaled $1,049,000, and we collected $309,000, which is 29%. And then I did a column that's the change, dollar change, percentage change, the tax roll, the delinquent tax roll grew in one year to $18,000. It was $18,000 higher in, on the 14 tax roll than it was in the 13, which doesn't really tell the story. But you go to May of 2016, which is the 2015 tax roll, and no, this is not easy to follow. But the potential collections for the five old years, not the current-year delinquent, because in May we've only been able to collect four months of them, but where we had a year cycle, the five older years, that was $1,010,000. We collected, there's the $426,000. Of that, almost $210,000 was nine taxpayers. When we come into May of 2017, which is the 2016 tax roll, and you look at the total for delinquent collections, the sum total of the five-year older years, that million-dollar potential that we've been having is down to 814. So the collections of $276,000 was based on $814,000, the $426 was based on $1,010,000. The decline in what was available to collect, so naturally the collections are gonna go down. We had 42% the year prior, $426,000, 34% in 276. There are a lot of things at play. We started out with less potential to collect, so that in and of itself, even at the same percentage, we would not have got to $426,000.
I'm just now understanding.
You carry that into a projection that, what are we gonna be looking at this time next year? This time next year, we may have a potential still below $1,000,000 to collect, and if we stay within average of almost 34% collection, then next year we're looking at collecting $327,000. And we won't know that until the time next year, whether I'm right or wrong. But to give you a definite answer of why the decline, why the $200,000, I think it's feasible to assume, one, we started out with a lower base to collect them. We dropped from a billion-dollar potential to an $800,000 potential, and then, in any given year, and a couple of years ago, hotels and motels got the buy. We had hotels and motels paying later, paying the delinquent. But you have to go back and see what your potential to collect was. When they didn't pay current, so our potential was higher, and then they paid three months later, and that bumped the delinquent collections, but then next year it's not there to give. So there's a lot of things that go into play.
Well, this chart helps a lot because I, one of my questions was, was last year an anomaly? In other words, did we collect more than usual last year? And based on your chart, we did. I mean, in the, you know, in 2014, you're looking at $294,000, 2015, $309,000, and then it jumped up to $126,000. So that was, that was a spike.
I believe, I believe that's correct. Now, you can't see what's in the minds of people. If they, you know, if they had the ability to pay, and they paid, if they're gonna hold out next year, I don't know. So it's never really consistent. The only thing that's consistent by and large is by the time we collect the current taxes, we collect the delinquent taxes, and we collect the abilities and interest, you basically get almost 100% collections consistently year after year. So it's either collected upfront, they don't go delinquent, or something happens and we get no delinquents that we used to, and then they pay it later.
Well, this alleviates my concerns. I appreciate you putting this information together.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
I have one more statement.
Yes, sir.
And well, I hope this weighs one time. You know, and we did here many times over, because the issue with selecting a delinquent attorney took us a long time to get through. But I want to tell you one, one unique thing about Nacogdoches. Our appraisal district is also the collection office. We collect for everything, okay? Angelina County Appraisal District doesn't collect, that's collected at the courthouse. But when you have a consolidated collection situation, where your tax bill, if you live in the city, has your city, your school, and your county taxes all on one tax bill, if you come in to make a partial payment, that partial payment is distributed to the county, the city, and the school because we're a consolidated situation. Anything that Krasinski, Bradshaw, if they contacted Nacogdoches School Taxpayer, and they're successful in getting them to come in and pay their taxes, if they make a partial payment or a full payment, they are doing work that benefits the other law firm because we're gonna put the money on the county, the city, and the school. If Purdue Brandon makes a contact, and that individual comes in and pays their taxes, it's benefiting Krasinski, Bradshaw. As far as the numbers go?
Sure.
Okay? Because we're gonna apply it across the board on a pro-rata share, we're gonna pay the county, the city, and the school an equal, you know, a percentage that equals their tax rate, the sum total of the tax rate. So that's one thing I wanted to point out, the effort, whether it's the, your attorney or the attorney that's contracted directly with the appraisal district, it all joins together, and I guarantee you, the effort is, the effort is still there to collect the taxes.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna dig up my pants.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that answered my concerns.
It was 6B?
That was, that was 6B. I am not, I will not, however, I'll make this, I'll go ahead and say this, I will make a statement. I will not make a motion in favor of this budget amendment and report. Items B and E are two budget amendments, $18,000, I think, $500 to repair a sign at the high school, and another $5,000 for a scheduling board at the high school. While I'm sure that these are important items, I also firmly believe that these are items that can be funded through fundraising efforts, PTAs, booster clubs, et cetera, et cetera. I believe the sign was originally donated to us, in fact, and so for me, it's hard to support using dollars that I believe should go into a classroom.
Which one, on the consent agenda?
It's Item B and E and the budget amendments. So I say that just to say that I can't, while I appreciate Mr. Woods answering my question, I cannot make the motion on this item.
Can I expand on the scheduling board? That's not a sign, that's a master schedule board for them to...
I realize what that was.
What is your pleasure?
Let me find the language. I'm trying to find the language for the consent agenda. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda 6B.
I think it's on.
Is that correct?
That correct, Holly? He moved to approve 6B.
Business office.
Business office reports, okay?
A second.
Second, it was a motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. Neal, all in favor, show of hand, raise of your right hand. Those that oppose, have to. Thank you to motion carried. Thank you. We come now to the action agenda. All items listed will be discussed and acted upon separately. Ms. Barberick, is that it?
I'll just pause. I want to point out for a moment, Mr. President, Holly, did we vote on the consent agenda approval of the other items?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You just pulled one item, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Do anyone have any questions for Ms. Barberick, page 131, I think? Any budget questions? All right? If not, we'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the 1718 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that the Board adopt the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018.
I second the motion.
Thank you, a motion by Mr. Green, second by Ms...
I do have some discussion here, sir, as well. I appreciate very much your hard work on this budget this year. I know that you approached it from a different perspective, and that's a zero-based balancing, zero-based budgeting process, which I applaud you for. I think that that's a much more efficient, business-like approach to doing it. As I've said before, I still have high concerns regarding our transportation budget. You did, you did reduce it by, you know, $335,000 this year over this time last year, but it's still, we're still way, a considerable outlier in that area by at least a million dollars over similar-sized districts in our area. I still have some concerns about the money that we're spending in general administration. I believe you reduced that by $378,000 this year. I applaud that effort. You know, this time last year, I was asking for a half-million-dollar reduction in that. You worked hard and diligent toward that, but we're not quite to the goal there either. So I would just say with, with that, I've got some hesitations about this budget, but I do applaud the effort that you're putting in to align this and make the necessary changes that our district needs to make to focus our dollars on our classrooms and instruction.
And I can say, you know, the transportation audit we'll be bringing in July, that was done by Tasbo, and we're paying careful attention to that, and Gray's gonna be working on that with Stacy, and there's areas that we know we can improve on, and we should start those practices, some of them, next year and carry them on, and I think we'll see lots of savings in that area.
Thank you so much. It was motion by Mr. Green and second by Mr. Neal, those in favor of approving the 2017-18 proposed budget, will show with the elevation of your right hand. Those opposed? Motion carried.
Reverend, may I just make one comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say to Ms. Barberick and to the teachers and administrators that work so hard, you know, submitting this budget, we thank you for your effort, your work, and you know, the largest part of this budget is focused on instruction, direct instruction of kids in the classroom, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for that observation, Mr. Neal. The second item is the consideration of Board action on the resolution extending depository contract, and Ms. Barberick again will comment.
Good evening, President Urban, Board Member, Superintendent Dalloway. In accordance with the current Texas Education Code, Chapter 45, Subchapter G, School District Depositories, the district has the option to approve one additional two-year extension of the current depository contract. The administration is recommending the Board approve extending the depository bank contract with Bancorp South for one additional two-year term for the 2017 through 2019 biennial. Bancorp South has agreed to the extension of the current contract pricing. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much, Board. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that the Board approve the resolution extending the depository bank contract with Bancorp South for one additional two-year term.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Coach Rashid. Those that in favor will show with the, go to the hand. Thank you. Thank you. Motion carried. Next, we have the first reading of the TASBO policy update 108, and that will be by Mr. Burton.
Thank you, President Urban, board members, and Ms. Dowd. If y'all will, we'll look at update 108. I believe you have it and have had that to be able to refer to. A lot of the changes in here, in fact, all the changes are from E, which has to do with instruction. The first EF local is just a replacement. It is actually, below that, EFA local has been deleted, and EFA is now EF. So our old EFA is now EF, if that makes sense. Below that, we have EFAA local, that's instructional materials for selection and adoption. That policy has also been deleted. There is no need for that policy any longer. Below that is EHDB local, credit by examination with prior instruction. The only changes to that is that the board would approve the examinations, and then on absences, it says to earn credit for a final break, that you would not be allowed to even have excessive absences. So those are the two minor changes to EHDB.
Do we ask questions at the end, or each individual?
You stop me at any point.
I just, I have a question about the excessive absences.
Yes, sir.
What, is that described, or is it, I mean, what if you have a child that's very sick and can't come?
Yes, sir. It is very described of how that works. Doctors' excuses, no extenuating circumstances, all of that come into play. What we're talking about here is the 90% rule, that a student must be there 90% of the time. If they are unexcused absence or things that, you know, they just can't do, then that's when that rule comes. But anytime they have, you know, serious health issues or anything like that, we don't have to worry about that.
My only question with this is, it's a local policy, and what was the reasoning behind, and maybe it requires you or Kelly, what's the reasoning behind the board approving the examinations when we don't even teach the examinations? I'm assuming that these examinations are going to have to come to us, and we have to approve them, and we're not even teaching them?
I believe what it's going to be is when our curriculum folks, when we look at earning, like right now, you can do it through Texas Tech, you can do it, there's several methods that we can go about earning credit by exam. The board just has to approve the method by which we go in getting those.
Okay, not the actual exam.
No, you're not going to thumb through it.
There's only certain places we can get them.
That wasn't real clear.
Any more questions so far?
There was, let me think, there was one other, and it may fit, it was about the physical education substitute. Is that in this policy or the next?
Yeah, there was one.
Is that EIF?
Yes, sir. I believe that's EIF, Physical Education Substitute. That's what we're on now.
I just, that kind of jumped out at me, because I remember we dealt with an issue at the middle school pertaining to band and PE and all that kind of stuff, and this may be an out. It looks to me like it says that the district shall, we have some flexibility in what we determine is can get credit on physical education in this policy.
That is true. I don't know if band and middle school can count for that.
I'm just saying, it clearly gives us the district's...
Yeah. I've always, I mean, Gray, has it changed, like whenever a student goes out and does karate somewhere or something?
No, the only thing that's changed, and a lot of this EIF is due to the fact of the programs changing as far as the students that just graduated, had the recommended, all these different tracks they go, all that language has been removed, because those students are no longer here. Some of these things, like what you're talking about, that's not actually changing anything that we're doing locally with PE credits. It's just taking the, as it being applicable to the student's graduation program, because under the other system, it was broken down, if you were, you know, going to be distinguished, or you're going to be whatever it is, there were credits that lined up with each one of those activities. Sometimes you didn't need physical education credit, but you could, you know, apply that. This way, it's just local credit, period.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on EIF? And I should have reminded this, and I apologize to some of the board members, if y'all will look, some of these, when they're in red, that means they're no longer part of, they were, but they will no longer be part of our policy. If it's black, it was already there, and no changes have been made. If it's blue, those are items that have been added or replaced for old policy. And I apologize for not saying that from the outset. The last policy is EL local. EL local is referring to charter, campus charters, they're going to call it now, the first distinguished, they want to say here, they want to say is that campus charters and charter program is the same thing, that's one word. So they removed all charter program languages, it's all campus charters. And that could be a campus charter from our district, that we started campus charters somewhere, or another organization came and started a charter school or charter campus here. All of the wording here has been changed in order to more reflect what it is in law and to kind of minimize the amount of hoops or circles that you jump through in order to get information about the charter. A lot of it has to do where you get your petitions now at the campus, it's taken out charter programs. And then in central administrations, to the superintendent designees office, it's just minor tweaks to the language. Basically, it's just replacing campus charter. No rule, substance changes.
Thank you very much. Any questions? What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that the board approve the first reading of revised NISD policy. No, I'm jumping ahead, excuse me. Board approved the first reading of revised local policy as contained in TASB Policy Manual Update 108, as presented by the administration.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and second. The questions, those in favor will show by the elevation of the hand. You know, thank you very much. We'll call on you again, Mr. Burton.
Thank you, sir. In reference to your board package to BE local, this policy change has come with the first hundred-day initiative that President Urban has liked to install, and number one was to expediate our meetings in the board. So the change to BE local would be from changing the start time from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And the reason for that is the board would like to be able to hold executive session at the beginning of the meetings, and then hopefully be through by 6:00 in order to start the meeting at regular time. There was some talk about, you know, doing executive session and then starting at 6:00 as normal. By law, we have to open our regular meeting, then go into executive session. So the only change in the policy to get start time, with the idea that, as y'all's pleasure, you can go in and say it first and then come back, it's for, actually, it's for the audience's sake, to try to keep them here less.
Thank you very much. What is your pleasure?
I'm good with it. I have the motion.
Mr.?
Wait, I'll...
I would applaud our new president, though. He came in with an agenda, and he's seen it through already in the first few days.
Mr. President, I move that the board approves the first reading revised NISD policy BE local.
I'll second it.
We might want to make it policy REV.
It has been moved and second. All in favor will show with the elevation of the right hand. Thank you so much, so ordered. Are there any other motions?
I would ask, I believe we had an item number 3C. Have we acted on that board?
Yes, we have. Where?
Did we? Personnel?
That's what I was talking, that's that motion.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I can make a motion. I move to approve the employment of professional personnel as recommended by the administration.
I'll second.
It has been moved and second that we approve the employment recommended by administration. Those in favor, show the elevation of your right hand. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Green, I thought you were abstaining from that one.
I don't think, I think it's the next one.
That's the only one. We did it all in one. Just one motion.
Is that just one motion?
Yeah.
I thought we had a different one.
No.
Just one motion.
I have to remove my buzzer. No, we have to recount. I have to remove my buzzer.
Those opposed? No voted out.
Have to abstain.
Have to abstain. All right. I want to abstain. Thank you very much. Are there any other motions?
Mr. President, I believe we've got an emotion, or an action item for 9A. I would move that we would table that item.
Y'all see it? Y'all see 9A?
Yeah.
I need a second.
I'd like a second.
Thank you. Moved and second. Y'all aware of it? All in favor? It's tabled. All right, future agenda?
Mr. President, if I may ask, at the upcoming board meeting, that we, I believe our next board meeting will be after the resignation, the final resignation date for teachers, if we can get a report on our campus resignations, turnover rate, and staffing for those replacements.
We do have listed also the workshop, and we possibly need to deal with dates for that.
About our academic workshop?
Right.
Okay.
Because I think that's going to be very important, and at this particular meeting, it just, we wanted to just be student-focused, just completely, just highlight, you know, the outcome of our students, and give major consideration to the kids.
Even though we won't have the final true state accountability ratings until August, we will be able at that time, though, to give a breakdown vertical, horizontal, and everything else, and comparison of other districts and so forth with our scores. And we can give, like I said tonight, we can calculate pretty closely as to what we're going to look on.
Would you rather wait till August to do that? Since you have all the information you need?
I think, I think we need to go ahead and do it, compare it on scores, and so I think we can tell enough in July, because we're going to have to look at the goals and revisit those according to what these scores are. And so I think it's important, because we need to get this done for the governance and move in on with that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I really do.
Holly, you send us out some optional dates? Okay? All right, anybody else?
Now, I would ask, since they have made me change chairs, if someone would take my usual assignment.
Mr. President, I move adjourn.
Y'all have a good evening.